Some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for both the council and for yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat, and directions to do so are in the chat, and this is for the virtual audience. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert to the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address, and if you would like to speak for or against. And for the the audience, the live audience, when you come up to speak, when you come up to the podium, please remember to state your name and your address. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat, and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address, and you will be given five minutes to speak. And those in virtual audience, please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice losing the remaining of his or her allotted time. At this time, our invocation will be given by Rabbi Karen.
Thank you for inviting me to be with you in this way this evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The last time I addressed this body was March 9, 2020, a few short days before we all went into lockdown. A lot has happened since then. We've faced many difficulties, and we've grieved all sorts of losses. Some of us have been afraid, some have been confused, others may have been angry or frustrated, and some of us experienced all of these emotions, and maybe even at the same time. And yet, we've found new ways to be together. We've learned or relearned what's really important in life, and we've reached out to our neighbors in new and different ways. As we gather together this evening, whether in person or online, to conduct the business of the great city of South Bend, let us rededicate ourselves to work together in unity and harmony to improve this particular region of Indiana that we all call home, each of us bringing our individual gifts and talents to this worthy endeavor. Faced with so many challenges, yet also with so many opportunities, let us pledge to join hands even when we disagree with one another, to ensure that the city of South Bend is able to continue to realize the abundant potential with which it is blessed. With those sentiments in mind, I offer this prayer by Rabbi Naomi Levy entitled, "Our actions are our prayers too. The prayer of our hearts and mouths is our hope and yearning, but the prayer of our limbs, our actions, is our salvation." Dr. Abraham J. Heschel was one of the greatest theologians of this century. Not just a scholar and a writer, he was also an activist. When he marched with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Selma, Alabama, he proclaimed, "It felt as if my legs were praying." The goodness that we perform in this world is our highest prayer. When we struggle to repair this world, to rise above our complacency and offer compassion, charity, and love, we are praying. When we fight to eradicate poverty, injustice, and war, when we take the time to perform acts of kindness, we are praying. When we gather the strength to give of ourselves to those who so desperately need our assistance instead of averting our gaze, we are praying. When our actions embody our truest humanity, we become a prayer. Amen.
Thank you so much for that beautiful invocation. We'll now stand for the pledge of allegiance. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember David?
Sir.
Present.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
He's muted.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
I can't hear the clerk.
Okay, okay. I have you down as being present. Councilmember Niskoski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
President White?
Present.
Nine present. Thank you. We'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, will you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the July 26, 2021 meeting?
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 26, 2021 meeting and found them to be corrected. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. There is no special business, nor do we have any reports from the city offices. I'll now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Clerk Jones, you please call the roll. Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where the bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been first, have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. So that was tabled. So we did have a couple of bills that were tabled in committee, so it looks like our first bill is going to be a substitute bill 105-21, where I believe we'll need to make a motion to accept the substitute bill.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill, Substitute Bill 105-21, a second reading?
Yes. 105-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 1905 College Street, Councilmanic District Number One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This came before zoning and annexation and was brought forth to the Committee of the Whole with no recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council. Bill Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Today before you is a rezoning petition for the Old Marquette School located on the northwest side of the city of South Bend. The request is to rezone from U1 Urban Neighborhood 1 to U3 Urban Neighborhood 3 to allow for the conversion of the school into 46 affordable apartments as described by the petitioner and their application. Quick look at the zoning map. I know most of you saw this just an hour ago, but the neighborhood is currently predominantly single-family zoned. The U1 Urban Neighborhood 1 is our more traditional urban-styled land, and then the S1, which is the yellow, is the more suburban-styled, single-family housing. That is due to the nature of the way that the neighborhood developed. That's why this neighborhood splits between the two zones. Here are some pictures of the site as it currently sits. The building has been vacant for approximately a decade. It was used for storage by the school corporation for a couple of years, but has been vacant for a while now. The current proposal by the petitioner is to rezone the building to allow for multifamily, like I said, to convert the building into 46 affordable housing units. The building and the land associated with it is a historic structure, and it is a landmark under the city of South Bend, so any alterations to the exterior of the building or the grounds would require HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, approval. Due to that, and also to preserve just the 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 building itself, the petitioner is not proposing many changes to the exterior of the building. The actual building itself is presented in the same footprint. The only addition is added parking spots to the already existing parking lot located right here. If the rezoning is approved and the tax credit is approved and the project goes forward, all that would need HPC approval and would also have to meet any zoning requirements as well. The staff looked favorably upon the request by the petitioner. We do understand that rezoning a large parcel in the middle of a single-family established neighborhood has some risks to it, but due to the historic nature of the site and the specific protections that the HPC landmark status provides, it helps mitigate some of our concerns. Rezoning the site to the U3 Urban Neighborhood 3 would allow for residential growth and increased housing options in the neighborhood. The vacant former school is a risk to the future of the neighborhood as well as negative pressure. As a protected landmark, there are limited possibilities for the reuse of the building. By adaptively reusing the building for housing, a local landmark would find a new life without drastically changing the established character of the existing neighborhood. Because the building is under the protection of historic preservation, the risk of a multi, the risk of a multifamily in any other form than the existing building would be minimal. I would like to note, just like all projects, the staff, when we received the petition, we send out notifications to property owners within 300 feet. Because this is such a prominent site for the neighborhood, we wanted to make sure to capture as many people as possible, so we did a 300-foot radius from both the Old Marquette and the New Marquette, so it was 300 feet from that entire, the school-owned property existing. The Plan Commission heard the petition last week and sends it to you with a favorable recommendation, as well as the staff sends it with a favorable recommendation as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and the petitioner is present as well.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, can you clarify who currently owns that property?
The school corporation.
And they've been paying tax and such on that property?
It's my belief that the school corporation doesn't pay taxes on that.
Okay. And then, how long has the city been involved in the current conversation around the reuse of this property?
Angela Smith, zoning administrator with the city of South Bend, offices located on the 14th floor of this building. I was made aware of this project probably two months ago, when they first started seeking the tax credit support from the city. So the city has not been involved in this project very long in terms of the conversation for this particular property. During that time, we did let them know that they would need to rezone the property, and we've been assisting them through that process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Would like to know how the engagement from the neighbors and ways that you were you were able to engage the neighbors and the feedback.
That'll probably be better answered by the petitioner. So our typical engagement is the notification, as Joe mentioned. We also posted the signs on the property for this particular project extremely early in the process. So essentially, the same week we received the rezoning petition, we posted signs on the property that notified people to contact us. We had received a few calls. With each call we received, we provided them with the petitioner's, or actually the developer's, contact information directly at that time.
We hear from the developer.
Would the petitioner like to approach, make a statement?
Thank you. Hello again. My name is John Anderson, President and CEO of AP Development, offices at 214 East Main Street in Brownsburg, Indiana. We are the developer of this project. We're very happy to be working with South Bend School Corporation and Indiana Landmarks and the city of South Bend. As Angela mentioned, we've only been involved a couple of months. I know conversations around this building have been ongoing for years. It's been on our radar because it was a ten most endangered. My firm specializes in these kind of buildings. So I've listened to Councilman Lee's passion for the building because he went to school there. We feel the same thing about these buildings. We have restored similar projects throughout communities in Indiana, working with the cities, working with Indiana landmarks, working with the local preservation group. As Angela also mentioned, we have reached out to the local community. Our phone number has been available. I have talked to anyone who has contacted us. Chris Huff, who is a community leader, contacted me a couple of weeks ago, and we had a nice conversation. We had a community meeting last Wednesday. Emails were sent to over 100 residents in the community. They were obviously residents here at the Planning Commission who we spoke with and heard their concerns and responded to those concerns. So given our short timeline, we have, we have, I think, done a lot to, you know, listen to those concerns. I don't know that we changed everybody's minds. We think this is the highest and best use of this project. The bones of this building are really good. It has been neglected. It's nothing that we haven't seen before. 10 years vacant isn't bad. A lot of our projects are 40 and 50 years vacant when we get a hold of them. So this one, the lights came on. We are proposing 46 units of affordable housing. The building is large. It's 70,000 square feet, but it has wide hallways and some other space that we just can't utilize. There are, any historic feature in the building that we can save and reuse, we will. The exterior will be updated. Windows will be to be repaired or replaced. The green space around the building will be maintained as it is. So when we're done, it'll look like a restomod building. 46 units, as I said, about $10.5 million investment in the neighborhood. It is affordable. 75% of these units will be at or above 50% AMI. 25% will be at 30% AMI. Those are incomes up to $45,000. A mix of units, studios, ones, twos, and threes in the project. As the site plan shows, we have a parking ratio of one to one. Our history with these projects is that's sufficient. We'll work through that as we get site plan approval. As well, we are trying to maintain the green space on the project. For those of you in the neighborhood, you know there's a mound of dirt in the back, which is part of the project, which we are going to level to create some green space as well. So we are very sensitive to the historic nature of this building, what it means to the city of South Bend, what it means to the neighborhood, what it means to people who went there, and we're very excited about the project.
Sure.
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Davis, you have a question?
Sure, I have two, actually. I'm going to ask them together, so we can get through this. Have you had any outreach to the Housing Authority here locally? And if, and also, would there be any project-based rental assistance included in this development?
Yes, we, I spoke to the new Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
Okay.
When this project came to our attention. They have committed 10 project-based vouchers to the project as part of this, and that helps with our scoring with the Indiana Housing Community Development Authority for the Affordable Housing Tax Credits. As we mentioned at the count, at the committee hearing, we will accept Section 8. We will not turn Section 8 away. So if that is something that someone can take advantage of, then we are going to work with them to help them take advantage of that.
Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to mention, and Todd reminded me, you know, just last week, there was a nice article in the South Bend Tribune about the need for affordable housing in South Bend.
Yes, sir.
Which is hitting at right, you know, just the right moment as we're bringing this project forward. And I think the the nature of affordable housing continues to change as market rate housing continues to rise. It used to be we could walk into a community and say, affordable housing and market rate housing are about the same. They're a dollar to a dollar 10 a foot. We're not seeing that now. The divide between market rate housing and affordable housing is growing, and you're seeing this consistently. There recently, a bill introduced in Congress to convert, to provide a tax credit to convert old hotels to housing. Last Friday, a bill was introduced in Congress to create a middle-income housing tax credit because of that divide that continues to grow. So I know it's only 46 units, but it's, it's a nice project that will serve a growing need in South Bend.
Is there any other council members? Councilman Lee?
Yes. One of, one of the concerns that we've, we've heard that people, you know, but they think that it's, it's going to be a dense amount of people in that small area or whatnot, 70,000 square feet, that's pretty big.
Yeah.
What, what assurances can you give us that this is going to be something that is going to uplift the neighborhood instead of bring it down?
Yeah, it's a great question, and we get that. You know, the projects that we tackle are just like this. They are projects where, you know, developments that have been empty. We just finished one in Huntington that had been empty for 30 years. We have one in Crawfordsville that's been empty 40 years. Empty buildings like this aren't doing anybody any good. We come in, we are a buy-and-hold company, so we will develop this project. We will own this project. It will be on our website. Everybody will know it's us, and we take a lot of pride in these projects. At the same time, we have a third-party property management company that I've worked with for 25 years. They also have a construction company, which I use to construct these. We're not going to develop this, turn around, and walk away and let it become whatever it's going to become. We are committed and invested in these projects to make sure that they stay as nice as they are when we finish them.
Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Do you have any information about the impact with the other properties that you have done similar to this, having to do with property values of their surrounding homes? Has there been a decline in property values?
You know, we have not seen, and I don't know that I have, you know, property tax value information on, you know, two, five, 10 years after we've finished a project. I will, again, looking back to Huntington, I will tell you what's happened there. That's a downtown project that has created a lot of energy in the neighborhood, a lot of energy downtown, right? Because we did take a vacant building and turn it into housing. In Union City right now, right downtown, an 80,000-square-foot factory that we're converting to affordable housing, and the buzz in that community is incredible. We're getting calls from people who want to use the commercial space. We're seeing redevelopment downtown because we're dropping $13 million into a city block. And so I'm of a mind that anytime someone's willing to spend $10 or $11 million on something like this, it can only be good for the neighborhood to have this building restored and those grounds restored, back to really close to how it was in the beginning.
One more. As you guys are looking to become new neighbors, I live right around a corner from where the school is. I used to walk there. There's an Indian burial ground inside the building. It is. Egyptian burial ground also inside the building that my class helped to do.
We loved that, by the way. That, like, we left the building and then realized, oh, we didn't go to the basement, and then we spent an hour and a half in the basement.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
Yeah, I told them about it. They didn't, I didn't think they knew about it. But, but this is the thing. We, what are you guys committed to doing to the neighbors, committed to the neighbors of, around that area, to assure them that this, this could be a win for the neighborhood?
So, you know, I understand that people fear what they don't know. People fear what they haven't seen, what, you know, they fear what we haven't done yet. I think our track record speaks for itself in these kind of projects. We have reached out to the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting. Everybody has my cell phone number if they wanted to call. We are always open to hear from them. If there is something going on at this property once it's finished, I want the neighbor to tell us. We're going to continue outreach and continue to be a good neighbor. It doesn't mean I can change everybody's mind. I do think once it's finished and people see the quality of the work, and people see how it's managed, that then we'll change their minds. But I understand right now, you know, it's hard when people aren't operating with all the information quite yet. But we will continue to be good neighbors and continue to have any conversation anybody wants to have about the project.
Clerk Jones, is there any of our virtual council members? I believe we have two that have their hand up or a question.
Any virtual council members that have their hands up? Councilmember Warner, just put your hand.
Okay, Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate your comments thus far. Can you talk a little bit about the hurdles yet? You know, I get, it's very early on in the process, and what all needs to happen before, you know, any kind of construction folks show up on site or anybody moves in, and kind of what that timetable and all of those hurdles look like?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we submitted our Affordable Housing Tax Credit application July 26. This zoning approval is part of that process. The housing, State Housing Agency will make their awards in November. If we are successful, we have already completed schematic design as part of the project. We have already completed a Phase 1 environmental study. As part of the project, we have completed a market study already as part of the project. Once we receive the tax credits, we'll go into design drawing phase with an expectation that we would start construction late spring, early summer, next year with a completion of summer 2023 and an opening at that time. So that's the timeline we're on right now. Obviously, tax credits are competitive. That timeline may move a little bit, but that, that's where we are right now.
And how many of your other projects have you done on, with the, the tax credits? As you said, that is competitive. I know it's, and then, you know, I got one kind of comment before you. I will say, there's not only a housing need, but there's a housing crisis in our community. And, you know, we've had a couple other developers here also talking about the tax credits, and so we've got a kind of a number of different hopes kind of pinned to those tax credits, and I was just curious, have you had experience with them and how competitive they are?
Yeah, so I'm actually a tax credit attorney and have been for 25 years. Was a partner at Creek DeBolt and Baker &amp; Daniels doing tax credit projects. Started my own law firm 11 years ago and a development- my own law firm eleven years ago and a development firm at the same time. I've lost track, but I've probably closed over three hundred, three hundred and fifty tax credit projects. We act as bond counsel and tax credit counsel to projects in Indiana and in the southeast. Most of our energy right now is geared towards development. We have completed a lot of successful tax credit projects. We understand the program in and out, as well as the other state tax credits, you know, it is competitive. We submitted a really good application, and we'll, we'll see how well we did in November. But it is a, it's a program that we understand very well.
Thank you.
We have Councilmember Thomas Morgan with their hand up.
I just, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted, again, I'm, you know, sometimes, when, when we heard, when we, I feel like sometimes when we, we throw, we throw out that term affordable housing, and it, almost to the extent that it, it becomes ubiquitous, and we, we don't understand what that means. The presenters have helped us to define, to define that in this particular project, and so appreciate you talking about the vouchers, the conversations with the Housing Authority. But you mentioned a, a term in this particular project that this is housing that I believe you called working-class family housing. And the, the range of the rentals, or the range of the rentals are between four hundred and fifty a month to eleven hundred a month. And so, the project to me doesn't feel like a, if you will, but could you say a little bit more about working-class family housing and, and use of that and, and define that?
Yeah, so the, the rents and the income limits are tied to the area median income, which is established by HUD. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but area median income for a single in St. Joe is probably in the mid-fifty thousand range. So this is both income and rent restricted, meaning that we are going to look at the incomes of the tenants to make sure that they qualify for the affordable housing. So someone who makes eighty thousand or ninety thousand dollars a year cannot come in and rent an apartment at four hundred dollars a month. So that's what we mean when we're talking about, you know, working families. At the same token, they have to have an income to pay the rent. So, so these are people who have jobs, who, you know, maybe can't work full-time, maybe they're part-time students, maybe they have entry-level jobs, that still need good, clean, affordable housing before maybe they move on to that next market rate step. So we are constrained by income limit in exchange for our using the Affordable Housing Tax Credits.
Thank you.
Next, we have Vice President McBride.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to chime in, we all, you know, do not like seeing schools sitting empty, and we definitely are in need of housing. And I like when we have changed over years ago the Central High Apartments. And I like the idea of being, having diversity and inclusion with housing, so it looks and feel more like the community that we live in. I am excited that there also is a partnership with the Housing Authority, and just keep in mind, and it's kind of tipping a little bit further than what Councilwoman.
I understand it, it's kind of like, living in the world is life.
A little bit more of what Councilwoman Thomas Morgan said, is that when you're talking about housing, one of the things that I think people may not know or tend to forget is that the Housing Authority has over a hundred or so scattered site units that are in Twickenham Hills, in, on the first district, in every district of the city that's mixed in with other affordable housing units as well. And there are a lot of people who are on public housing and Section 8 who have full-time jobs, are full-time students, and make a decent wage. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, a lot of times when we talk about public housing, everyone assumes that everyone cannot afford it. So I'm excited about the project and seeing the building being used, especially for something that we need now, which is housing. Oh, yeah.
Councilman Wax?
Thank you. I'm just gonna go back a little bit to Councilman Lee's question, and if I'm not mistaken, his question was the impact of other projects of yours on the surrounding communities. And you responded, I believe, with a couple of projects that were downtown or urban centers. Do you have other projects that are in residential neighborhoods that you could talk about and how the impact of your projects are on the neighboring communities?
Yeah, so keep in mind, Union City is a town of thirty-five hundred people, so downtown and residential are the same. Yeah, we, we, we worked on a project in Union City fifteen years ago that converted an old school much like this into affordable housing. It won preservation awards for the architects. The school had been empty, I don't remember how long at that point, but probably at least twenty years. It stabilized that corner, it has remained full, property values have remained steady, and now our current project is half a block away from that, and we're creating another fifty affordable apartments. So that's a good example of, of one that's in a city. We worked on a project in Anderson, the old Central School Apartments, which is in our neighborhood. Another project in Huntington, which was the old Central High School, also on the edge of downtown, but in a neighborhood. And so all of those projects stabilized vacant, dilapidated buildings, brought a mix of incomes and types of people into the neighborhood, and have had a positive effect from everything that we've seen.
And then, too quick, will all of the units be affordable income?
They will, and they'll be layered by income, as, as we talked about. So half of the units will be at that higher affordable level, and seventy-five percent of them will be above fifty percent.
And then finally, you, you mentioned that you purchase and then you retain your projects, and you said they're all on display proudly on your website. What is the website?
The website is being redeveloped right now, so it's AndersonPartnersLLC.com.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have two speakers, we have Kelly Haynes and Jordan Geiger. Ms. Haynes, if you would unmute yourself, and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Seaver Haynes. My husband Terry Haynes is here with me. We live at eighteen twenty-two College Street. We've lived here for twenty-five years, and we have real concerns about having low-income housing down the block from us. In addition to living in the, in this community for twenty-five years, I've also worked for a property management company and.
I'm sorry, are you speaking in favor? I should have clarified that, the wishing to, the public wishing to speak in favor of the Bill one oh five dash twenty-one.
I, I put in my chat that I was opposed.
My apologies, we, normally we go with those that speak in favor of the bill first, and then to speak in opposition.
That's fine.
Yeah, my apologies.
Not a problem.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill one oh five dash twenty-one? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Todd Zeiger, I'm with Indiana Landmarks, our offices are at eight zero one West Washington in South Bend. I'm Chair, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to talk. I'm kind of the bridge between the school corporation and the developer, just want a couple of comments this evening. I've really been looking for a solution, as Councilman Lee talked about, this building's been vacant for some time, and it's really been a stalemate until recently, and timelines have come up over and over, and we wish there had been more time as well. But really, this timeline we're on right now was really caused by the funding that we were trying to go after with Anderson Partners this summer, and so that's the June, July, August timeframe we've been on. It was referenced earlier that, you know, discussions have been going on for over a year, that's true, between me and the school corp, to even get them willing to say, yes, let's investigate maybe a possible reuse. So I don't think it, I just don't want everyone to think that this development has been under discussion that long. It really was my effort to just simply try and get a conversation with the school corp to allow some development to go forward. The funding cycle came up this summer, and Anderson Partners was willing to step in and say, yeah, we'd be interested in being a developer and investing this funds. Part of that timeframe was also identifying a quality developer who could do a project of this type at eleven, ten, eleven million dollars, that it wasn't just anybody. But we wanted someone like John Anderson's development that we knew could handle a building like this, that's been vacant for a long time, that's difficult to develop, and can bring a quality product to the market. And that's no small feat, defining that combination, especially one willing to put up their funds in advance before they even knew they were gonna get the tax credits, which John has done. So yes, there's been some conversation going on for some time, a year or more really, with the school corp, but it's not been in an intent to try and be a sleight of hand with this, with the neighborhood. It really was just a matter of trying to even have the conversation with the schools to allow redevelopment to even be considered, and then identifying a quality developer like John that's willing to step in and invest the funds. That's what's fueled the timeline, was going after some of the funds this summer. So we see this as a really great bridge to try and break the stalemate, to get this building redeveloped and into some productive and good use, quality, quality housing, everybody deserves a good place to live, and we think this is an opportunity to provide that for the neighborhood. We think this is a sustainable development. We think this is a learning opportunity to teach the students next door that we can't just throw our buildings away as a method for sustainability, that we need to look at ways we can redevelop them and use them for new purposes rather than just throwing them away. So we think this is a learning opportunity along that lines as well, and just showing that historic buildings have a place in our, in our community. They can tell the story of how long, you know, Councilman Lee went there and walked past that. That story continues to the next generation and the next generation, and we think that's a learning opportunity for the school as well. So we see these as good reasons, obviously, I'm in favor of it because it's a historic building, but more importantly, I think it can provide really good quality housing in a neighborhood that could use it, and provides a good lesson for the nearby students as well. So I appreciate your time, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Hello again, Adam Toring, Historic Preservation Administrator, office on the fourteenth floor of this county city building. I'm here to briefly speak in support of rezoning of this property. This rezoning will help pave the way of the redevelopment of the structure at nineteen oh five College Avenue, known as the historic Marquette School Building. This is the second school to stand on this site. The first, a portable school, was meant to be not a permanent structure, with only a handful of classrooms to serve the northwesterly expansion of South Bend. Construction of this school began in the summer of nineteen thirty-six, utilizing federal Public Works Administration funding. At that time, much of the neighborhood was still vacant undeveloped land, there was a large open area to the east. The structure was built to last, it's a tank, as we've talked about over and over again. Design of the structure was awarded to a prestigious local architecture firm, Austin and Chamblow, who designed an Art Deco-style structure with elements of art modern. Two later additions were added to accommodate continued growth in the immediate neighborhood, first in nineteen forty-eight, and then yet again in nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-three. Pardon me. The structure was designed, designated a local landmark by this common council in two thousand and seven, and added to the National Register of Historic Places in twenty thirteen. While the first status requires that any changes are reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and that the building be maintained, the second status affords the property owner, or a property owner, access to grants and other financial incentives to achieve that end. The HPC Office has steadfastly advocated for the preservation and reuse of the structure, and we are optimistic that this endeavor can be brought to fruition. My colleagues in the city have to hear me say a number of phrases repeatedly, I'll leave you with two of them. Use is key for ensuring the long-term preservation of a building, it has to be used. This large structure is currently zoned U1, which would currently allow for it to either be used as a single-family home or a church. It's gotta be rezoned to be anything else. Please do not let zoning for this property be the reason it's not usable or attractive for redevelopment. Two, the most environmentally friendly and cost-effective building is a building that's already built. Like we said, it's built like a tank, it's not going anywhere. It's sat more or less vacant for ten years, underutilized, barely maintained, and it's still good to go, to the point that someone is willing to put up millions of dollars to invest in this property because they see it as still savable and usable. We have a developer who's willing to invest the money. That's amazing. Please hear this recommendation favorably, changing the zoning will pave the way for future use of the structure. And as a personal anecdote, and this is me taking off my Historic Preservation Administrator hat and putting on my normal person hat, in a previous life, before I was married to my wife, and when I had significantly less gray hair, I'll leave that to you to determine if there's a correlation there, I lived for many years in affordable housing in another community. It had a very lasting impact, it made my life livable because I could afford to live there. So I, I find, personally, it's, it's interesting to me to see people voice opposition to affordable housing when it's so close to them. I understand that, but as someone who's lived in affordable housing, like, that is poignant to me. So, again, that's my personal anecdote, that's me taking off my city hat and putting on my, my normal person hat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Bill one oh five dash twenty-one?
We have Kathy Kirschner.
Okay.
She has raised her hand to speak in favor.
Ms. Kirschner, could you please state your name and address for the record? And this is for Bill one oh five dash twenty-one. Is she here for the other bill? Yes, that's what I figured.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we have.
But I am also here to, I, I would like to speak if I may.
Absolutely. Name and address, please.
I do know, Kathy Kirschner, five thirty-eight Marquette Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. Certainly, no, thank you, I, I really love that, that old building. When I was a kid, we used to play volleyball there, and I've been sad that it has been vacated for so long, especially in a neighborhood that could really use it. I know that the, the other end of it has been used, and used well, as in academy, but I, I think that, under proper conditions, you know, depending on, you know, the overseers of the situation, I'd love to see that building be used as a residential. I, I think that's an awesome idea, and I, I think it could be done really very well and discreetly, and it would be a boon to the neighborhood. I, again, you know, with, with the council and the overseers and, and quality control, but I, I think that that's a fantastic use of that old brick, beautiful structure, historic as it is, it reminds me of, you know, the downtown, the old school downtown that, that was done the same way. So I, I, you're right, I'm here, I'm here for, you know, enlightened self-interest, but enlightenment is part of it, and I, I recognize that that building could be properly used for residential, and so that's why I say thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Bill one oh five dash twenty-one?
I don't see anyone virtually wishing to speak in favor.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna see if there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Bill one oh five dash twenty-one.
Okay, so far in opposition, we have Kelly Haynes and Jordan Geiger. Kelly, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear her?
State your name and your address, please.
I guess, my name is Kelly Seaver Haynes, I live at eighteen twenty-two College Street, and I'm here with my husband Terry Haynes. We have lived in our home twenty-five years, and love our neighborhood. We also both work in subsidized housing. I have worked in subsidized housing now for thirty-one years, so I understand the need for it, I understand the concept of it, but I also understand the difficulties that come with maintaining subsidized properties that have a high level of extremely low-income tenants. In South Bend, there's approximately two thousand fifty- In South Bend, there's approximately two thousand fifty-three Section eight apartments. There's an additional one thousand thirty-six low-income units, such as the tax credit properties. And then the housing choice vouchers, which are managed by the South Bend Housing Authority. There's another two thousand, two thousand and six of those. So that's a total of five thousand ninety-five affordable options for housing for low-income renters. We don't need an additional low-income housing in our area. We already have a large number of rental properties, which have contributed to the property values in our area, not increasing at the rate of those on the northeast side or on the south side. Those are homes that are owned by individual landlords and often take Housing Authority vouchers for payment. The average rental household for low income is two point four people in an apartment. With the proposed Lytec property, they were proposing forty-six parking spaces, one for each apartment. We live in a world today where most adults each have a vehicle. There's no way that it's going to accommodate forty-six units with forty-six parking spaces, two of those being for ADA compliance. We do not want parking on the street. That's going to add another deterrent to our neighborhood. The, in addition to the excessive vehicles that are going to be in the area, you're also predominantly looking at approximately at a minimum of ninety-two people residing in less than a half a block space, which, that's a lot more traffic. We couldn't get a stop sign at the corner of College and Marquette, but they put in speed bumps. And we're now going to add additional vehicles in our neighborhood within the less than a half a block space. And almost a hundred vehicles, if, if basically you're looking at two people per household needing to drive. This would cause additional light and sound and emission pollution in our neighborhood. I have concerns with the Lytec, the Section forty-two housing, nine percent tax credits are extremely competitive. And I have looked at Anderson Partners' portfolio. They seem to have been very successful in getting those nine percent tax credits. But again, that's not a done deal until it's awarded. The building down there is approximately seventy thousand four hundred square feet. It will only have revenue generating space of fifty-four thousand square feet. This leaves approximately sixteen thousand four hundred square feet of non-revenue generating area to heat, cool, light, maintain. That's twenty-three percent of the building that basically can't produce income to help support the expenses. So that means in order to make the.
You have forty-five seconds left. I just want to let you know there is a five-minute limit.
In order to make the building profitable, they're going to have to keep it at almost a hundred percent occupancy. And it sounds like they're going to accomplish that by allowing Section eight housing. They've already committed to ten vouchers, and they're looking at twenty-five percent of it being thirty percent, seventy-five percent being fifty percent. And we have concerns of it driving down the, the prices in the neighborhood and the building not being maintained after the fifteen-year compliance, well, after the fifteen-year tax credits, they'll have to comply for thirty years.
And your time is up, Ms., I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Jordan Geiger. Jordan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record,
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. So Jordan Geiger, hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yeah, four two four South Michigan Street, Unit six sixty. So I just had a couple, a couple questions about, just for the, for the, for the petitioner. So nine percent tax credits are like very, very competitive, as it was already mentioned. And so I'm curious as to what has been your success rate within the, within the state of Indiana? And then my other question is about, I was going to be in favor of this actually, but I had a question about whether or not you've engaged, like the Pokagon Tribe, there was some mention that it might be an indigenous burial ground or something there. And Councilman Lee mentioned some Egyptian influence. I'm kind of curious about that because I'm not really sure. So I'm wondering, like, do the, does the, do the local tribal nations support this project? Has there been any engagement with them? And then as far as your, you said that twenty, twenty, twenty-one percent or ten of those units will go to, will go to voucher recipients? And then fifty percent will be for those making seven percent of the AMI, which AMI on fifty thousand dollars, which I think that's a little low. That will hire a family at least eighteen thousand. So I'm wondering if those units.
You're breaking up. We didn't really have. Jordan?
Can you hear me now or no?
I couldn't understand your last question.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So for, my last question is about the market study that was conducted. So for the market study, you said that fifty percent of the units will go to families that had, that make seventy percent of AMI, which if I'm just basically get on fifty thousand, which is probably a couple thousand dollars. I'm wondering, based on your market study, that go to families that have two working adults or one working adult, because wages have been stagnant in this area for a long and among, at least my generation, millennials and Gen Z years, a generation under me, many of us are not having kids now, and so we're living individually. And many of us are not making eighteen dollars an hour. So I'm just wondering, like, who, based on your market analysis, analysis, who would occupy those, those units? And if the local tribal, tribal nations support this development project, given that it's a historical site that has a long history in the city?
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to respond? You get five minutes for the response as well.
I probably won't need five minutes for part of that. I can let John answer the AMI questions. There is no Indian burial mound. There's a large mound of dirt that was piled up from when they built the new Marquette School, and they piled it over on the corner of the lot. And there are graffiti in the basement that has certain attributes of Egyptian whatnot. It's just a joke. So there's no indigenous burial grounds or other concerns as far as that's concerned. This is a clean site. With that regard, we would have looked into that prior to that. Don't dismiss it. But in this case, the mound is a pile of dirt from the previous construction and graffiti, maybe Councilman Lee can test too in the basement.
It was a project that the kids did, and it's lasted forty years.
So I should have done it sooner. I, I pulled up the market study we had performed. And the market analysts predicted we'll be ninety-five percent occupied in four months with forty-six units, which means we're leasing eleven or twelve units a month, which is one every three days. That's the demand right now in South Bend for this affordable housing. So a lot of numbers got thrown around. This is not subsidized housing. This is affordable housing. We sell the tax credits to help defray the cost of the development, the capital expenditures. We have talked with the housing authority who have agreed to provide the ten project-based vouchers. If we have qualified tenants, then we will certainly use those. Twenty-five percent of the units will be at thirty percent AMI, so a lower income. Fifty percent of the units will be at fifty percent AMI, sorry, twenty-five percent at fifty. And fifty percent will be at that higher sixty percent AMI. So when we talk about affordable, seventy-five percent of these units are going to be at or above fifty percent of the area median income in South Bend. These are not extremely low income apartments. Success rate, yes, we've been very successful with the nine percent tax credit program. We have two under construction right now. They're going to finish next month, four percent or four months ahead of schedule. Both of them, they both already have waitlists for people wanting to move into these apartments. It is competitive. Generally, one and three, one and two are awarded. But we've been doing this a long time, and we have gotten our fair share, if not a little more, of those nine percent tax credits.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to Bill one oh five dash twenty Please approach and give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Cress. I live at one eight five one College Street. Over the last few weeks, I've had the opportunity to speak out against these apartments a few times. My overall concern boiled down to two main problems. The first being that these apartments ruin the fabric of a community that's trying to go back. Just in the last year, we have seen three investment groups come into rehab houses in the surrounding area and really improve our neighborhood the right way, a way that keeps the culture of this community and makes it a place that new families want to live. When we speak of affordable housing going in here, for some reason, there's a crazy belief that this is a very affluent part of South Bend, when that isn't the case. Numerous houses have sold on College and Brookfield for less than eighty thousand dollars. I bought my house on College Street for thirty-five thousand dollars, making way below the bottom of the numbers we're talking about here. We already have our affordable section of South Bend, and I fear the goal of this project is disguised greed with humanitarianism. The second goal I have is to look after the best interest of the students at Marquette Montessori Academy. These students were long promised the opportunity to develop skills in all the intangibles that we always push for students. If this project doesn't go through, we would have a new generation of students who could build amazing memories, doing something unique, which in our case would be working with their hands in the community garden. But long for these apartments to go in, you're taking away from these students. Mr. Todd spoke about how it might be a good lesson, but that will only work if we have students that will actually attend this school. I fears, I fear if we go through with this project, parents will no longer care to send their students to this school. It's an academy school. That means it's a choice for parents to send, to send their students here. It's a Montessori school. There's a few other options in our area, all of which go to sixth or eighth grade, depending on which one you're looking at. Parents could send them there instead. It only survives because of these parents that choose to send their kids to go to this special kind of education that is fundamentally built around using your hands in order to gain more educational experiences. We're talking about forty-six apartments here, only forty-six to forever change a community and possibly do damage to it forever. I would suggest that we do not go through with this project, and hopefully we can allow these students to build lasting memories like you had, Mr. Lee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to Bill one oh five twenty one? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's all cool.
To be in short, my name's Jim Champa. I live at seventeen oh eight North Adams Street. I just got an update from the zoning hearing, and I forgot to mention, Mr. Lee, all my children went to that Marquette School. So I do have some sentimental value to that school also. And I never got to see the Egyptian things in the basement. So anyways, I'm here to speak on the Marquette School, Lytec project. And from the zoning board hearing, I think everybody knows I'm against the proposal. And what myself and the neighborhood were upset about is the process that was undertaken by all those involved. On August ninth, the Tribune published an article, and Todd, I'm sorry, the South Bend Tribune wasn't specific enough, so, so I apologize for, for any misconception on that. But given that anyways, the perception was still out there from the neighborhood that those discussions were going on for that year and that the project was approved. August ninth also was right around the time the zoning hearing signs were placed out, so there wasn't a lot of time to respond to the, to call in. And then that, one week later, on the sixteenth, you know, comes before the, the zoning committee, and then another week after that, it's coming before the common council. So that has moved very quickly, and people haven't had a lot of time to react to that. And all of this was done without the feedback from the discussions with the neighborhood. You know, so, you know, going through the process of, of getting the neighborhood feedback and having them feel about, getting their feelings about it, they, we get engagement and buy-in from the neighborhood. Maybe the feelings would be much better about the neighbors and how, how people felt about it. Many have also said that if this project goes through, you know, they're going to look to sell their homes, they're going to go explore that, and that's not good for the neighborhood either. And I got this feedback from, you know, when I and a couple of the neighbors, we walked around the neighborhood in close proximity to the old Marquette School and had residents who were home at the time and who were willing, sign a petition against the project. In two and a half hours, fifty-one households signed the petition, and it was one signature per household. They were appreciative of the effort and were glad that somebody is trying to make their voices heard. I have a copy of that petition. Do you need that again? No?
We have it. Thank you.
There is also a common theme amongst those I spoke to, and their opinion was that if the project was located next to the decision-maker's child's school, there is no way they would vote for it. And that they're going to pay attention to the vote and see if the council has the neighbor's desires represented. I think at best, this should be deferred until an appropriate engagement with the neighborhood has been performed. It's very imperative that buy-in from the neighborhood, I think, is for a project like this to be successful. And Ms. Haynes started touching on this. One of the issues is, is you know, there's a fifteen-year compliance period with these tax credit projects. And once that, there's an investor partner in there, it was ninety-nine point nine-nine percent typically, they get out at that point. So we'll be just, you know, at that point, I, I don't know what would happen with that partnership.
You have one minute.
Oh, I'll be done before that in a second. And so, you know, we also have to look at the long term of that. And typically, in an application, you have to have, to get some points, you got to have an extended use agreement, which at a minimum is another fifteen years. So for thirty years, that project will be rent restricted. And given that, it'll be hard for somebody to come in and want to buy that at the end of the fifteen-year period. So just a side note on, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of Bill one oh five twenty one?
I'm wondering if the petitioner could speak on that fifteen year, just to clarify what is being stated here.
So under Section forty-two of the tax code, the tax credits are under over a ten-year period after we finish the project. There is a fifteen-year compliance period where the project remains affordable. We agree that we as developers to a fifteen-year extended use agreement after that. However, there is a process under the code that the property can be sold as either affordable or market rate. We as developers commit that we don't do that. I'm, at that point, I may be retired, but fifteen years from now, it will come off of that initial compliance period. There will be another fifteen-year compliance period. There is a process under the code to sell the property at that time.
At the end of thirty years?
At the end of fifteen.
Okay. Thank you. So is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, at this point, the hearing on Bill one oh five dash twenty one is now closed. Do council members wish to make any statements regarding this bill?
Call the row.
Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for Bill one oh five twenty one.
Yeah, I would like to make a statement.
Okay, council. Okay, councilman, would you like to make a statement?
I know the time is getting away from us, and this, this is a very, very important decision to be made tonight because we make the decision of, do we let another building decay in our community and become an eyesore? Or do we, do we get excited that there are people who have a vision and wants to put eleven million dollars into this neighborhood and to, to make this place that many people in our community for so many years got their, their, their teaching, their, their skills, their passions and enjoyment in this building? Do we let this building go down and, and not try to revitalize it and make it something that can continue on for future generations? I live right down the street from it, right, three blocks away. And it is paining me to drive by it every day and see it. This place that I learned so many great lessons from, abandoned, boarded up, maintained but not being utilized. So I understand what, 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 what concerns people have that are directly right around the corner because I'm right there. I understand those concerns. I understand that, you know, you, you, you don't know, but granted by the fact that this, this company has been able to get these tax credits and produce really nice things. Central High is a great, a great, a great living space, and we need affordable. Not low income, but affordable. I think people mix low income and affordable. They, they get that mixed up. But people who are trying to better their lives need to have great places to stay. And so, um, this is important, and so I don't take this vote lightly. But I won't, I believe in, and I believe that this building can be saved and be something that, that allows people to raise their families or live in, or millennials or whoever, they can have, have affordable and have a nice place to stay, which eleven million dollars investment helps lift the neighborhood up. So that's my statement.
Is there any other council members wishing to make a statement? Councilwoman Hammond?
I would just also like to reiterate, keeping the needs of the city as a whole in mind, we do have a significant shortage of affordable housing. And to have a developer come into the city willing to utilize an existing brownstone building, which is what we've all been asking for, instead of tearing these buildings down, please utilize and renovate what we have. So he's, he's offering to do that. So I think this also, not an easy decision for some, but I do think it's something that is much needed in our community.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a statement? If not, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 105-21.
I move that it go forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
Aye. I can't hear if you don't talk into the mic.
Okay. President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Substitute Bill 105-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Okay, we're going to move on to Bill 107-21. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 107-21 a second reading?
107-21, public hearing on an ordinance street vacation property between Highland Avenue and the alley northern border of the property begins where Philippa dead ends at Highland Avenue on the western border of twenty-two thirty-four Highland.
Thank you. And I do chair the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee, and the committee report out of that committee was sent to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation. Is the petitioner present?
I am.
If you could give your name and address and share with us any key points regarding this bill.
Yes, hello, my name is Kathy Kirschner. I live at five thirty-eight Marquette, four six six one seven. In terms of why I present this is that the property that is being discussed, I've been taking care of it for twenty-three years. I moved in to the adjoining property on the eastern perimeter of it, or rather, the eastern border of it in nineteen ninety-eight. And when I did, people who would be walking down the alley, this was just an empty lot, and it just became a repository of trash. And so I started picking up the trash, and I continued to pick up the trash. And the, the, the woods in this area is a continuation of the Rum Village Woods. And so if you've been there, you know that the trees are very, very large and they're locust trees, and they fall down very easily in windstorms. In fact, we've recently had some trees come down across the Highland, which is the, the front of the property, just one week ago. And the city doesn't seem to know that the property that I'm asking them to vacate belongs to them because when they clear the street, they push a lot of the, the, the extra things off to the side into the very property along the Highland-Philippa connection that, that I just mentioned. So I've been taking care of it for twenty-three years, and I continue to do so. I, I, I cut up and I, I take away the, the, the fallen timber that happens often in twenty-three years. And it also, the way that Philippa ends into basically a hill, which is very, very tall. I'm imagining like twenty-five to thirty feet tall of just dirt. It, it turns out that it becomes a very, very favorable place for individuals to dump their trash. And so they come into a very overgrown area, they dump their trash, including tires. So the trash, the tires, the wood that falls, I've been taking care of that for, for twenty-three years and cleaning it all up. And it dawns on me that if I had that vacated and could fence it off and clean it up and put some lighting in there, that people would be dissuaded from dumping in that space. And then I would also have from down below the Highland area, a space that I could actually use as a walkway up to my property because at this point, I access it through an alleyway, which seems to be Philippa based on the city plat, but which is in fact just a very, very narrow alley just behind the back end of the firehouse that is located, the front end faces out on Prairie. Also, the, the fact of the matter is that, um, I, oh yes, oh, thank you. I, I could use, like, I could, I could, I could build steps up to my house from Highland, and it would, it would just seem more like normal housing where you don't come in from the back end, but just come to the front of your street and go directly up into the front end of the house. I, I, I guess that's basically it. I've been taking care of it, and I would continue to take care of it and pay taxes. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Councilmembers, do you have any statements for the petitioner? Or any questions? I'm sorry for the petitioner. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of Bill 107-21?
I don't see anyone from the virtual pub, public that is wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 107-21?
I don't see anyone virtually that's wishing to speak in opposition as well.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're going to now close the public hearing on Bill 107-21. Is there any statements council members would like to make? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill 107-21.
I vote that we send it to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. The bill has, have been made a motion and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report, report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to take a roll call vote on this? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead and take the roll call.
I thought we'd get a slit's ass. That's why I said aye real fast.
Well, we're submitting some information. I just want to say thank you to the council, and thank you for all the members who actually went out, took the time to look at the property to understand. I, I really appreciate your representation, and thank you, Ms. Nizgatsky, you know, for also coming out and, and writing a letter in favor. And, and everyone else who went to look, I really appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome very much.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Oh, our motion is precarious.
I would now entertain a motion to resolve from the committee of the whole to the full council.
That was it?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, the full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you please give a third reading to substitute Bill 105-21? 105-21? Yes.
That was the substitute?
105-21, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at nineteen oh five College Street, Councilmanic District number one in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute Bill 105-21?
Yes, President White, bill, substitute Bill 105-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'll now entertain a motion regarding substitute Bill 105-21.
I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Substitute Bill 105-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 107-21? 107-21, third reading on an ordinance street vacation property between Highland Avenue and the alley northern border of the property begins where Philippa dead ends at Highland Avenue on the western border of twenty-two thirty-four Highland. Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 107-21?
Yes, President White, Bill 107-tash, dash twenty-one was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'll now entertain a motion?
Vote for passage.
Second. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Bill 107-21 has passed. We're now moving to the resolution portion. Clerk Jones, will you please read Bill Resolution twenty-one dash forty-four? Twenty-one forty-four, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for an updated comprehensive plan for the city of South Bend generally and more particularly for property west of the St. Joseph River. I will entertain a motion to hear the substitute version.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilman, council, councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. If I'm not mistaken, I do believe that we received a recommendation from the committee at our last meeting.
Yep.
And that recommendation was favorable, and that was from the community relations.
Yes.
At this time, I'm, I know we do have a presenter. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Henry Davis Jr., fifty-one seventeen Ottawa Drive, South Bend, Indiana.
Who needed?
And I'll ask a co-sponsor, so she's a presenter as well.
Lori Hammond, twenty-six fifty-eight Time Out Hawk Trail.
You can go ahead.
Do I need a read?
Yeah. And before, I'm sorry, before we even get started, look, I think I got tired. I'm sorry. We have members from the public that's, that will also participate in the, in the presentation after the reading of what's on paper. So you have members from, you, well, you have, excuse me, you have the president from the LaSalle Park Neighborhood Association. You have also from Bendix, help me out now. Kennedy Park Neighborhood Association, what else? I'm sorry. Lincoln Bendix Neighborhood as well. So you have three neighborhood organizational presidents that are here that are going to also participate in presentation. Lori, I'll get out your way now.
And I would ask that the other presenters, after councilmember Hammond and councilmember Davis have given their presentation, if you come to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please, as part of the total presentation.
The copy I have in my possession is not the substitute bill.
I think that the public letter was changed, if I'm not mistaken. I want to make sure.
Thank you.
I don't think this is the correct version.
Mm-hmm.
Substitute is a couple of pages earlier in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
It is. You're awesome, thank you. I apologize to the community. Substitute Bill twenty-one forty-four, whereas Indiana statutes and South Bend ordinances require the common council, when reviewing requests for zoning changes and other changes to land use, to consider whether the proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the city of South Bend's comprehensive plan. And whereas the state of Indiana enacted IC thirty-six dash seven dash four dash five hundred to establish standards for developing comprehensive plans for the promotion of public health, safety, morals, convenience, order. safety, morals, convenience, order, or the general welfare, and for the sake of efficiency and economy in the process of development. And whereas, the last and current comprehensive plan for the city of South Bend was approved in 2006 to guide the economic development and growth in the city for a proposed 20 years. And whereas, the past administration enacted a program entitled "A Thousand Houses in a Thousand Days", resulting in the demolition of many houses in the city, which many believe contributed to the destabilization of the neighborhoods on the south and west sides. And whereas, the common council has adopted and enacted an entirely new and updated zoning ordinance, which went into effect on January 1st, 2021, and has developed multiple neighborhood plans. And whereas, many neighborhoods are not represented by an association and lack the resources to develop a workable neighborhood plan. And whereas, there is a great need to research, discuss, develop, and implement a modern comprehensive plan to address the critical need for affordable housing, area connectivity, and equitable development through community engagement and stakeholder collaboration. And whereas, consultation with an experienced urban planner would be a necessary asset to properly work with the common council and the administration to update the current comprehensive plan, to effectively use assets and address problems that were unanticipated at the time the last comprehensive plan was adopted. Whereas, the common council is committed to a reorganized and well-informed comprehensive plan that integrates and promotes economic justice and fairness. Now therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, hereby calls for the support, calls for and supports a broad, community-engaged, comprehensive planning process that integrates and promotes economic justice and fairness, incorporates sustainability and anti-violence measures, and will result in the development and implementation of an innovative comprehensive plan for the entire city of South Bend for decades to come. Section 2, the common council also pledges to commit time, energy, and resources to support and work collaboratively with residents, local stakeholders, and city administration towards a new comprehensive plan for all in our community with particular focus on the underserved communities. And Section 3, the common council strongly encourages the use of experienced urban planners or an urban planning firm to advise and assist the city with development, with developing an inclusive economic development strategy for historically underserved neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilmember Hammond. This is before you for a number of reasons. I think most of you heard me talk about task-based expansion and developing homes and housing and some of the things that the West Side has gone through for a number of years. As a result, you know, and looking at some of the things that we've done here at this level of government is that we set a framework that will be allowable for development in the future, future development. And that could be tomorrow, or that could be five years from now. But it is our duty at this point in time that we work to create a better atmosphere for the residents west of the river. That geographical area has been carved out for a few different reasons. One of the reasons is that you have a number of projects going on, on the West Side of the river, that are not interrelated or not interconnected between each development. You have, and I think we just got a good presentation over development from the last petitioners that was here. But you have an MLK Center that will be redeveloped, at least $10 million is going to the area. You have container homes directly down the street from that particular area. Neither one of those two are connected. There's an affordable housing crisis in that area as well. You have the city cemetery. You have the idea of a Linden Street project that's happening. You have South Bend Housing Authority further, further south of this area. You also have the development with the Cub Stadium as well, and all those things being right there in front of us. Again, this city cannot continue to afford to spend that amount of money. King Center being one. $10 million, and we do not have plans for future growth of the neighborhood. We just got off of another petitioner when they were talking about the school. It's the same situation. You want to make sure that the area is prepared for development and the development projects are connecting with the future growth, the projection of that neighborhood. I think everything we've talked about here today suggests that these things need to happen. As it relates to the idea of a, of a plan for the entire city, comprehensive plan for the entire city, and I've heard that before. I don't think that these areas that I am talking about will get the same focus that it needs if we were to move forward with the idea of how everything west of the river looks. I don't think that we will have the ability to put the critical eye there. That's why we're talking about, and also asking for some urban planners that will be able to go into situations like these and be very sensitive to the people that live in those areas. I think that I've said enough. Lori, do you have anything?
Just a couple pieces, and I don't know if anyone from city planning is still on the meeting, but this is a conversation that is already underway. They recognize the need for, to begin this comprehensive plan. They understand the need to spend a great deal of time out in the neighborhoods discussing with the residents what types of things they're looking for. Secondly, it is stated in the resolution that there are just some neighborhoods that are not represented. So we have some of the more affluent neighborhoods that are able to, with resources, to develop their own neighborhood plans. Then that becomes an amendment to the existing comprehensive plan. But then you have other neighborhoods that are not represented that just have to carry through on that 20-year plan that really has nothing, as Councilman Davis stated, that provides the connectivity with the money being spent. And I think this is critically important.
Davis, I will call on your three presenters.
You have Mr. Marvin Creighton, you have Ms. Marilyn, and you have Ms. Viola Sims.
We do ask that you state your name and your address.
Each of which are presidents of neighborhood associations within our given areas.
Okay. My name is Marvin Creighton, C-R-A-Y-T-O-R-I-N. That's my wife, Elvira Creighton. Thanks for.
Your address.
Let me speak tonight.
Mr. Creighton, your address. Your address.
305 South Lake Street, South Bend. 55 years ago, we chose property at that area to build a home, 45 years ago. And we reared our two children there. But of course, things have changed in those 45 years. We've got women who there that were owners of those houses. You know, they're property owners, own the houses, there were no runnings, you know, speak of. So now, we need money to come to address the building department. We've got projects going on, not having a permit. I watched my Councilman Davis call the building department and told them they didn't have a permit. Perhaps they got a permit. But he also told them they weren't building that building per city code. They didn't do nothing. They didn't do a thing about that. They didn't. I know they must have not came out. They had, to let that building go up like it did. So, and then there's the zoning issue. We got fences, private fences being built right up to the, right away. That means right up to the sidewalk. You don't understand what I'm saying. That's a zoning issue, because you don't have to get a permit to do a fence. And we have code enforcement issues. We need code, writing tickets, and writing these places up. You know, trash, piles of trash, tall weeds up and down the alley, all over. We need more police, police out there. We've got people, I mean, like it on a track, a racetrack, a drag strip, racing up and down the street, you know. We need speed bumps. I mean, it's a residential area. And then there's drug, the drug problem. I can see it all the time. There's a noise all the time of the night, playing the music up loud, the boom boxes in the vehicles. I see a truck traveling back and forth, moving too many times not to be doing drugs. And then there's the shooting issue. Then there's the street department. We need speed bumps to slow those species down. We need signers up. Directional signs. We've got water standing in the middle of the street. And we need senior citizen assistance. For instance, lawn work, assistant with the lawns, with the seniors' lawn, you know. Snowshelving for. And we need grants to, seniors to get repairs done on the home and keeping seniors in their home, preparing them to be more handicap accessible. We need all these signs. So, yes, we need money out there. So, I appreciate, it's time to let me speak. And I hope that your vote, and as Henry said, we put especially out there, going through it, you know, from house to house, seeing what the needs are in the area. Thank you so much.
My name is Marilyn Gashaw. I live at 2514 Kenwood, South Bend, Indiana. And I'm here tonight to support Henry and Lori's resolution. And I specifically want to point out the vacant lots that are in my neighborhood. As a result of the "Thousand Houses in a Thousand Days", it left my neighborhood with a ton of vacant lots. And those lots are, have become neglected parcels of property with no homes. They attract illegal dumping, which contributes to unsightly blight on the urban landscape, breeding grounds for rodents. It also makes criminals feel comfortable to do their deeds in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has become disjointed and has lost its sense of community. And the property values are lowered as a result of what's going on in the neighborhood. And I point this out because often here that we have these vacant lots, let's put some houses on those lots. But I'm asking for more. I'm asking for, along with Henry, the urban planner with experience in redeveloping low-income neighborhoods. Not just put vacant lots. Because what happens when you put and address only vacant lots? You don't address the social determinants that lead to crime. And so we need to look at everything comprehensively, as the plan would call for. And I want us to consider all that we do, and forgive me because I've been with the eye doctor, my pupils are dilated and I can't read. But on the east side of town, there were all these studies that were done to determine what was needed downtown, what was needed on the near east side as far as housing, as far as retail, everything that was needed. That's the kind of study we want for the West Side. What does it look like if we reinvent the West Side low-income housing areas? Also, there are a couple other areas that I wanted to address. I hear talk of bringing retail to Linden Street. Well, if you have a median income of $18,000, there's no disposable income. So why would you consider bringing retail to an area where the income's not there? Why not consider bringing a program like the Greenhouse that was talked about, that would be supported with tax dollars that could actually help the neighbors, that would encourage family activity, that would become a place in our neighborhood, which we don't have? We have to go east if we want to do anything as a family, and that shouldn't be. Because there's enough of us on the West Side that want to do things in our own neighborhood. Our parks are lacking. We don't have park benches. We don't have park tables. We no longer have the grills. And I grew up in that neighborhood, so I remember what Bendix used to look like. And speaking of Bendix, we have a section of Bendix, the old corporation, that the city is still taking control of. What about the parking lot that's been, I've been back 15 years, and I don't know how long Bendix has been gone, but at one time there were 8,000 cars parked at Bendix on a 24/7, daily. There were, there were cars filling the parking lot. Well, that's been over for at least, what, 30 years maybe? We still have the parking lot that's full of weeds and that has rusted out dividers that are within the parking lot. It'd be nice if the city allocated money to do something about the parking lot, like maybe get rid of it, or even blacktop it, whatever you need to do. But we, as neighbors who are homeowners, that's also impacting our, our property value. And the other thing that the city did in my street, they actually did eminent domain, had neighbors move out because Bosch wanted that property, and they had a vision for what they wanted to do with the property. Well, Bosch is no longer there. The city built a median that they no longer take care of. And there's lots of speeding and so forth and so on. So we need to take a look at some speed control methods for that particular of Mead Street and Bendix Drive. There's just, I have a whole list here that I'm not going to go through. But there are lots of needs, and we need for that, all of our needs to become part of the comprehensive plan. And we need it to be addressed for the new budget. Thank you for your time.
My name is Viola Sims. I live at 1636 Florence Avenue. I bought my house there about 15 years ago. And during that time, when I bought my house in the 17th and the 1600 block, there was 21 houses on my street. Today, there are nine houses on my street because of the "Thousand Houses in a Thousand Days", okay? During that time, my neighborhood has turned into a dumping ground where they just come and dump. I call city, I even have took up on our own to pick up trash, couches, whatever, in our neighborhood because of all of these houses that were towed down. Not considering that during the time that it's open grounds for just someone to drive by and do open dealing on the streets. And it's sad to come find out that as big as South Bend, South Bend do not have a drug task force. And in my area, we do need a drug task force. Because when you find six and seven years old, they can tell you what a car is doing when they pulled up down from their house, it's sad, you know? I love South Bend. I love my community. But when my granddaughter tell me that they are selling drugs here, and I don't even know it, she even tell me what kind of drugs they are selling, that's, it will make South Bend look bad, okay? We need to enforce our police department. We need to enforce our police department, give them more authority that they can do a better job in that area. Because not having a drug task force and, um, we have drugs coming in from everywhere. Detroit, Michigan, Ohio, Illinois. And it comes right there in the Kennedy Park area and do they drugs. They don't put nothing in there. They just makes money and leave, uh, go to somewhere else. But we really, uh, need that. Next, speed, okay? I live on the corner. At nighttime, starting at six o'clock, we, uh, I think they call them some kind of these souped-up cars. They would come down my street during a hundred to seventy-five miles an hour. They don't stop. They pass right through stop signs. At nighttime, they do just that kind of speed. They pass by hanging out the cars, shooting up in the air, which my bedroom is right there on the, uh, on that corner area. And a lot of time, we just sit down in our basement until three o'clock when everybody goes home. Because we are afraid that, like my husband said, bullets do not have eyes. Bullets can come anywhere. Um, and also we need speed bumps, okay? Because if we have speed bumps, I think it's like five or six streets in that area. If we can put speed bumps that would slow that traffic down, because it's only take one or two of those twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars cars to tear something up, the war gonna get around. They gonna stop doing all of this speeding in our area. Like, um, I heard ten million dollars in Kings Center. You putting ten million dollars in Kings Center for these kids? But these kids' safety is at stake when they is walking to go to Kings Center. These cars do not stop at a stop sign. These cars do not stop for the kids. Half of the time, the kids have to jump out of the way. Our sidewalks, the kids can walk on sidewalk because our sidewalk is always grown with grass, overgrown with tree limbs, boughs, uh, that someone throwed out the car, that they cannot walk on the sidewalk. They have to walk in the street. Then the traffic needs to slow down. Um, I can go on with our area, but speed bumps what we really need. Because sooner or later, you know, these kids is going to the center. My grandkids or my, even myself, when I come to a, uh, intersection, whether I have to stop or not, I'm stopping. Because I don't know when a car is gonna run the stop sign. But we do need speed bumps in there. And, um, like I said, we need our South Bend Police Department to have more authority over there. Half of the time we call, they don't even come. Because when they do come, they say they can't do anything because their hands is tied. So I'm asking you and also the citizens of South Bend, untie these officer's hands and let them do their jobs before someone really, really gets seriously hurt. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, this is the last person, your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Ray Thompson. I'm from seven twenty-seven North O'Brien Street. I have a question to ask all of you first. What are you gonna do for the west side? I travel around, I've been in South Bend over fifty-some years. And what I do before I complain, I survey. And I go through the rest of the city and I see a lot of growth and everything coming up. But our west side, nothing. Okay, just like Vala said, our policemen got their hand tied. We, and I'm a part of the Kennedy, uh, Neighborhood Center. We got two bullet holes through our windows. Lucky enough, nobody was there at the time. Oh, two weeks ago, I live on O'Brien, over at, uh, two hundred block of, um, uh, Huey, there was a shooting. I mean, I thought it was the old, okay, well, there was so much shooting over there. And my wife said, what's going on? I said, don't go to that door. Don't go to window. Also, the driving. Wilbur, College, Johnson, uh, Huey. It's ridiculous the way the people are traveling up and down those streets. And we have kids ourself and so forth. We need some speed bumps. I've gone around town and I've seen speed bumps other places. Why can't we get the speed bumps where they're really needed? One other thing, you mentioned about, uh, Martin Luther King Center, ten million dollars. Okay, you're gonna put all this in, but there's been two shootings there. You need safety there more than you need a building. You want to talk about the killings at Martin Luther King or the pretty Martin Luther King? I would rather talk about safety at Martin Luther King than the killings. So, all I'm asking for is help on the west side. Thank you very much.
Well, council members, do you have any questions of the presenters? Council, um, Clerk Jones, is there anyone as far as the council members? Have any questions?
I don't see any, uh, council member hands up.
Okay. Council member, what asks?
I have a question. Uh, we, you know, when this was proposed initially a couple months ago or month and a half ago, um, that was before we got a presentation by, uh, the administration. It's part of the budget process in which they outlined, um, I believe it was two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. I, I don't remember the exact number, but they, um, proposed a significant amount of money to do a comprehensive plan as part of, uh, the next budget. In light of that, do you still feel that this resolution is necessary?
Absolutely do, and it's a good question. I'm glad you asked that question. Um, I wasn't racing to the finish line for this discussion with the administration. What I am doing is I'm responding to a need that's within the second district. Uh, actually, it impacts everybody that's on the west side or west of the river. Uh, because we're going to be talking about traffic patterns. We're going to be talking about how development really happens, you know, when we begin these plans. These areas that we're talking about, um, are severely, um, underfunded. Neglected probably be the better word. And because of that, you have all of these issues that these residents are talking about. Now, there are just, these guys are just not, these, these men and women that just came up in here, they're just not residents. They are actually active, uh, as, uh, presidents of the Neighborhood Association. So that's not just sitting at the house looking at the news, watching TV and complaining. They are actively trying to engage the community and make a positive change for those areas. So yes, I think that it needs not, it, it needs a look, but it needs a magnifying glass. I think that, uh, the issues that are presented are, are issues of violence and the atmosphere being so violent. So all of these things happen because of that. And so, if you look at the, uh, the way the bus routes have been changed in that area and as well as the, uh, crime map, you will see why I'm saying that. That area, uh, west of the river going straight back, uh, seemingly feels like it's been boxed off from the rest of the community, uh, the city of South Bend, given these conditions, uh, whether it's housing, crime, or even, um, rate of pay in that area. So yes, I do.
Any other questions from council members? Clerk Jones, is there any council members that, virtually?
Yes, we have council member Tomas Morgan.
Thank you. I, um, I do have a question for the petitioners. As I, as I hear the, um, the other, um, presenters on this who represent, um, some of the neighborhoods on the west side, I, the, I'm struck by the issues that you raised. Um, they, uh, you, you raised, you know, traffic, speed bumps, um, safety, um, uh, allowing the police to do their, their job, um, giving them more authority. Um, these, uh, um, these are plans or these are issues that, um, I hope will be addressed in, um, in some neighborhood planning that's happening currently. Um, my question is to, um, um, uh, to Mr. Davis and Ms. Hammond, do you feel that comprehensive plans address this issue, these issues that, um, the other presenters raised adequately?
I think that it's pretty clear that as you make investments into neighborhoods where you, um, have a well-thought-out plan as far as, um, where and how to bring these developments in and then connect that section of the city with the rest of the economic growth that the city is experiencing, that it will help to mitigate all of those concerns. Will we be spending direct dollars or, um, will the planning, the comprehensive plan itself, address speeding and crime? No, but the economic development will, especially if it is well-planned.
Is there any other questions from council members? If not, I go to, uh, public hearing. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of this resolution? State your name and address.
Christopher Huff, eighteen thirty-one College Street. Yes, I know something about these speeders, just nothing else. Running up and down College Street, Brookfield, Adams, Johnson, et cetera. We live with it also. I'm a city planner. I'm a city planner for the city of Mishawaka, also for the city of the village of Schaumburg, Illinois. I don't stand up here because I know everything, because I don't. But I do know a few things. And one is that five or six years ago, I stood right here at this very lectern and I warned, and I'm going to use words, or excuse me, names, Mayor Peter Buttigieg, this one thousand houses in one thousand days will do nothing more than destabilize many of these neighborhoods. And that's exactly what's happened. And I've watched it and I appreciate every word that these folks have said because they are, they are the living proof of what I stood up here and without banging my hands on the lectern, warned everyone about. And I used an example. I said, there was a city, there is a city that had twenty-five thousand vacant houses. They received a grant from the federal government to take down those twenty-five vacant, twenty-five thousand vacant houses. And now, right now, two thousand twenty-one, there are fifty thousand more vacant houses. And that's the city of Detroit, Michigan. And I, I told the director at the time, I said, don't you use any example from that failed state north of us and apply it here to my home city? Okay? But they did anyway. Now fortunately, not all thousand of those houses were demoed. Only six, excuse me, only four hundred and fifty, if I remember correctly, were actually demoed. But as this lady said over here, her neighborhood, which had sixteen houses at one time and her, or maybe it was sixty, and is down to nine, that's the kind of warning that I tried to make very apparent to this council. Two of you were on the council at the time, hopefully you remember. And I'm not, I'm not here trying to, you know, badmouth the folks that were here before you or the previous mayor. But some of these things need to be looked at in the long term. And the long term was a disaster for some of these neighborhoods. There were even three houses in my neighborhood, all three of which are going through total restoration, private restoration now. They were going to use, the city was going to use twenty thousand bucks to tear down this one, twenty thousand dollars to tear down that one, and twenty thousand, or maybe twenty-five to tear down the third one. We told them, go away. Several of my neighbors who got together said, go away. So my point is, is that a comprehensive plan for this part of the city is a good idea. And I'm not sitting here and saying this because I'm a city planner, because I'm not looking for a contract. I've got plenty of things to do. My point is that some of the comprehensive planning can be safety-related, safety-oriented, such as, as the speeding problems and such as the drug problems. It doesn't just have to be land use. The land use in other parts of the city is a good idea based on its stability. But this city has always been very backwards. And this is a very good example of why it's been backward and I want it to stop. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to come and speak under, uh, public hearing? If so, we ask that you stand and come to the podium at this time.
Sharon Benicki, thirty-eight, twenty-two Ford Street. I was going to bring these up at the privilege of the floor, but since it's here, we need the study. We need the money. We need rehab, but we need quality rehab. We need quality build. This is on Western Avenue. And I warned the council a couple years ago that the work was shoddy. It's falling apart. I can't help but think that if this was happening on Jefferson over by Howard Park, it would have been dealt with. But this is grass and weeds growing up between the bricks where people park. This is a car that the weeds have grown up so far on those bricks that they're a foot tall in the street. So it doesn't matter if you come there and spend a million dollars to fix it up if you're only getting a half a million dollars worth of quality work. We need quality and quantity. I sit with my neighbor on the front porch and we count the cars. Well, is that what gonna make the stop sign? Uh, now he'll stop twice next time. Cars don't pay attention to the stop signs. We sit on our front porch and we watch the Chinese fire drills of the drug deals going on. Well, yep, here comes three trucks. One gets out, they hop around and hop around, and then they get back in their vehicles and take off. We know they don't live there. It's just a non-stop. I'm not in Henry's district. I'm in Sheila's district. It's not just, you know, this side of Western or that side of Western. It's the west side. We've been neglected. We've been abandoned. And when you throw us a little token, it's not quality. If you, you go down Western Avenue, don't look up. The facades are beautiful. Look at the concrete that's only been there less than five years. It's already crumbling. I can't tell you how many street lamps have been ran over. And Henry knows, they can sit there for a year, two years before they get replaced. How long was the one out at Last Stop Liquor? We need guts over there. We need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, um, wishing to speak who haven't spoken yet? Mr. Creighton, you want to make some comments under, um, public hearing portion?
Yes, Marvin Creighton again. Yes, we're in favor of this resolution. If you're gonna put some money in the west side, sure, we're in favor of it. I'm sixty-eight years, I mean, seventy-eight years old. And I would like to, my wife and I would like to stay in our home. So we need assistance on some repair. We need assistance on, uh, taking care of the lawn. Is there anything that's, uh, available now to assist seniors in doing that type of thing?
We have the home repair program and there's others that, we will make sure you get that information. Ms. Creighton.
Well, what about, uh, doing the lawn? Take, uh, seniors with the lawn?
That I'm aware of.
Yes, we're in favor of it. Bring it on. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call for those that are in present, in person, under, um, open time that we're speaking, then I'll go back to the clerk to see if there's anyone else waiting to speak under public hearings portion of this resolution. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Wilder. I live, I live at thirty oh nine West Linden Street. I'm also disgusted about things that's happened on the west side of my street, my housing. I signed up for the repair, rebuilding program about three years ago. I haven't received anything. Well, I did have a house suspension, but I haven't received nothing about it yet. And I steady see things getting rebuilt. Uh, they talking about, uh, building condominiums or pagan street and the houses in the neighborhood, they need to be rebuilt too. Or they need help with grants to try to fix their house up and nothing, nothing's getting done about it. And why would you want to build something new when you got something tore down? Why you want a new house right here and a regular house right there? That don't make no sense to me. So, I just, I think the neighborhood on Linden Street need help with repairs. And how do we get help with repair, getting on the repair program? And getting my, getting the streets fixed up and, and the curves? One end of Linden had, uh, light posts, the other, the other, the other end of Linden Street don't have light posts. Uh, why do this side got this stuff and the other side don't have this, these things?
Other comments?
Uh, I'm trying to think of something else. Oh, yeah, and then in the wintertime, the snow. The, the snowplow, they snow, they, they, they do all the snow in the dr- in the driveway instead of putting some over here and putting some over here. And then when I get home, my, my snow is this high. And then I, I gotta step up this high to get to my door because then I didn't even put the snow right, shovel the snow right, the city. I get in the other neighborhood, I see the street, the, uh, the truck go down. They stopping at, they stopping at that driveway and doing this driveway. But on, on the Linden Street, they about, they pounding all the driveways up. So, that's my question. The west side is in bad condition and they need to get some money and fix it up like they do Western Avenue, like they do the other, east side of town and everywhere else. like they do the other, east side of town and everywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to Clerk Jones. Is there anyone waiting virtually that would like to speak under the public hearing portion?
Yes, we have two speakers. We have Jordan Geiger. Jordan, if you would, unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jordan Geiger, four two four, South Michigan Street, Unit six sixty. I collectively own a house on Falcon Street, just behind Mr. Creighton. And my family owns a home on Florence Street. And I'm speaking in favor of this resolution, with the understanding that it is only a resolution. I sent you all an email today, largely because of some of the, many of the concerns that have been raised from the petitioners and from those speaking in favor of this resolution. And in that email, I said that we need to meet, you know, neighbors need to meet with each department and hear about each department's priorities. We need to overview their budgets. In past years, as part of the budget process, and I know President White can speak to this, there were departmental presentations, and that allowed for residents to be able to weigh in on certain spending, you know, items and priorities by department. I feel that, as you, as we've heard, like around the home repair program, which many of us fought for three years ago in two thousand seventeen, that there are programs and initiatives that folks are just not being connected with, largely because there's not been the kind of in-reach into the, to the neighborhoods that needs to happen. I also feel that as part of this comprehensive plan, which, from what I have learned from Tim, who is over city planning, that this could be a three-year process, and that they're looking to fund two neighborhood plans. I'm hoping that far West Side neighborhoods will be priorities for those plans. I know in the resolution, we use the language that some neighborhoods have been neglected and they lack the resources. But you have neighborhood organizations that do rest in low-income or impoverished neighborhoods, like Census Track Six and Census Track Nineteen, who do have resources. So you have the Near West Organization that has architects, developers, all sorts of folks that have all kinds of skills, and social capital and capital are in connection. You have with the N and N, you have architects, you have highly skilled individuals who are plugged in and have a lot, immense social capital. But what about those neighborhoods that aren't, you know, as plugged in or don't have as much social capital? How are we engaging them? I also feel that as part of this, this planning process, there needs to be, it needs to spur an intergenerational conversation, right? Because my generation, right, we lack wealth. Like, we're not owning homes. Right now, and this is based on the racial wealth divide from two thousand nineteen, the homeownership rate among black people is thirty-five percent. For whites, at that time, it was sixty-eight percent. For Latinos, sixty-three percent. For Asians, fifty-one percent. When you look at liquid asset poverty by race, meaning folks who don't have any liquid assets, meaning no money, no cash on hand, sixty-eight percent of black folks are liquid asset impoverished. When you talk about households' wealth, thirty-seven percent of black households at that time had zero net worth. So when we talk about these issues of, you know, drug trafficking, right? It's largely because wages are stagnant, and there aren't many opportunities for young people. You can make more selling drugs. It might be a little different now, right, that Illinois and Michigan have legalized it. But you can make more better income selling weed than you can work in a twelve or thirteen-hour job. And then when you have to go to Elkhart to make seventeen and perhaps eighteen dollars an hour, you lack transportation. You know, what are you, what are you to do? And then you have organizations or employers, I think like RICO, which hire people in at fifteen, you can make. I know my brother's working, he's making seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. A lot of old heads from the Lakeside in particular worked there. That just closed down. They just got rid of hundreds of workers, right? So we have a huge, you know, economic need in these neighborhoods. And so we need to actively, you know, engage, you know, our elders, but also, you know, our young folks, so we can have an intergenerational dialogue. And we need to bring people into this budget process. And so I'm hoping that we can do departmental presentations, you know, at the charge, Black centers, so folks can ask questions about specific programs by departments. On Falcon Street, I don't just see, you know, neighbors driving fast down the street. I also see the police flying down the street. We do need traffic calming measures, you know, put in place. So I'm hoping that out of this, we have a more robust discussion about what are the nuanced needs of these communities. And again, I just want to remind you all that there are ten questions in that racial wealth report. And I've not heard those questions come up in these budget discussions. And so I'm hoping that we will revisit those questions, if you have. Or if you haven't, maybe you'll visit them for the first time. But we need to ask those questions, so that we can really look at becoming a more inclusive society. Because I'm worried about young people. I'm hearing from people my generation all the time that rents are not affordable. And we have elders
Mr. Jordan?
You know, who are low-income and cannot afford, you know, the current rents. So we have to have those discussions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Clerk Jones, who's the next person?
Actually, we have two more. The next person is Jesse Davis. Jesse, if you would, unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jesse Davis, P O Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. So we've been having these kind of discussions in front of the council for many, many years, even prior to the Thousand House and a Thousand Day Program. But I do remember walking through some of these neighborhoods shortly after these houses were demolished, not only by myself, but with Councilman Henry Davis and some other folks. And we actually did some videos online. And, you know, we talked about how the neighborhoods and all this affordable housing that was going to disappear. And all we saw being built was high-dollar housing that was out of the reach of most citizens in the community, how it was going to affect these neighborhoods negatively. And now we also see schools being closed down, which is also kind of an after effect of these houses being destroyed. Because if you don't have children to go to those schools, those schools obviously end up getting closed down. We also talked about TIF districts, and how the TIF districts were capturing so much of our tax dollars. And then those TIF dollars were going to a lot of businesses and places that, you know, really didn't need that tax dollars. And we're always in a situation where we're saying tax dollars are tight for all these neighborhood programs. Tax dollars are tight for these youth programs. But if we didn't have these TIF districts, and we weren't giving the TIF dollars to these places, and we also weren't giving away the tax abatements like they were jelly beans, we could build that tax base a little bit. But every house we've tore down, now the tax base is virtually gone in those neighborhoods. And it's not just the West Side. Unfortunately, the West Side sees the worst of it, I think. But I own property on the Southeast Side, and over off of Calvert and Lear Street. And if you go into the Southeast Side, there are so many vacant homes over there again. It's unbelievable. And it's going to continue to be a non-stop cycle unless we can figure out a better way to approach it. And, you know, the city numbers of people living in this city may in fact be growing a little bit, but it's not growing in the right areas necessarily. And these neighborhoods have been neglected. You can drive down Western Avenue, and the main drag down Western where they did the work is beautiful to look at. But as soon as you drive a block north or south of that area, go look in the neighborhoods themselves. I, I've put videos out, and I know a lot of council members have seen the videos on my vocal. And, you know, even the news has talked about it a few times. So we need to find a way to increase these tax dollars that are going into these neighborhoods. And it needs to go all the way into the neighborhood, not just in your main drag, in your business district, like on Western and Lincoln Way West. But we, we need to do these things in the neighborhoods, throughout the entire neighborhoods.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, the last person that's waiting to speak?
That would be Tiana. Tiana, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, common council. Good evening, Don. Tiana Baptiste Waddell, nine zero four Thomas Street. I'm in full support of this resolution as well, in putting the same amount of financial energy into the West Side District Two as we put into our more affluent neighborhoods in South Bend. Simple things like sidewalks without grass breaking through, speed humps, clean streets, trash, trees. I mean, the simple things aren't even taken care of and should be paid attention to. Just in response to some of the things that I heard the presenter say, I'm in response to decreasing the crime rates and drug activity. The city has recently made a compact with South Bend schools. There are studies that show when we increase reading levels and math levels and graduation rates among our students within our city, that a decrease in crime and violence rates happen. Comprehensive and intentional efforts into bettering our school system will support the decrease in crime and violence in our city, along with other social and economic efforts, not an increase in a strong hand from the police force. But to reiterate, I am in full favor of putting more work into the West Side and beautifying that part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in opposition of this resolution.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Council members, any comments or entertain a motion?
I'd just like to say thank you to those who came in to speak. We really appreciate hearing from you. And please know that, that, that was, that your sentiments are being heard.
Councilman Wax?
Thank you. And I'm aware of the hour, and I'll be brief as well. I, I am in favor of the city doing a comprehensive plan. I was happy to hear that that was part of the mayor's initial proposal. Obviously, we haven't had a finalized budget proposal yet. But I'm happy to hear that it's going to be included, and that's going to be part of the discussion going forward. That said, I do have concerns with this resolution. Specifically, by focusing and saying that we do need to have a comprehensive plan for the whole city, but we need to focus on part of the city, concerns me. And additionally, it changes what the scope and purpose of the comprehensive plans from the statute and the whereas provisions it provides what the statute says. And then the therefore provisions it provides an entirely different definition of what a comprehensive plan is. So I have concerns as to the actual language of this resolution and the utility and purpose of it. Again, I do support having a comprehensive plan. I'm happy the city will do it. I really did enjoy, and I appreciate listening to what everybody had to say regarding their concerns and issues in, in our neighborhoods. And I do think that's something that we as a council need to listen to and talk about. I don't think that's necessarily tied to this resolution itself.
Thank you. Any, all the comments from council members? Clerk Jones, is any, any of the three council members who are, who have joined us virtually?
Yes.
Have any comments?
Yes, you, first you have Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Thank you. I just, I also, I, I have a few, few items that I want to address here. But I want to start by just saying that I really appreciate and respect all nine members of our, of us on the council, and understand that we all have different ways of getting things done. And I, I want to reassure members of the community that, that you have nine members of council that are trying to, that are, that are listening and doing what, what, what we each feel is the best way to, to address your concerns. With that, I just want to say that I too have some concerns with language in this resolution. And I appreciate some of the amendments that the, the presenters did incorporate at my suggestion. But some of the, the language I do have concern for is that the resolution, as Councilman Wax has indicated, calls, calls for a comprehensive plan. But yet, we, DCI is planning to kick off the comprehensive plan with the twenty twenty-two budget and proposing resources for that process. Secondly, this, the city plan that is currently in place, that, that the council adopted in two thousand and six, is intended to be a twenty-year guide for, for city development. That plan, along with area plans that have been more recent, all of which I, I have read at, at some point while I was a board member in the Near West Side Neighborhood Organization. But the, the comprehensive plan did much to protect certain parts of the West Side in their land use. And so I, I do want to say that, that even, even currently, in the next few years, it continues to have an important purpose. Secondly, I want to say, I'm sorry, thirdly, I'm losing track now, is that we are in the midst of four West, four neighborhood plans, three of which are in the West Side. And that shows to me a commitment and investment in listening to neighbors in the West Side. Now, we hope that there may be more that are represented on the West Side in, in the next year. But currently, three of the four neighborhood plans include the Near West Side, Kennedy Park, and Rum Village. And those are really important, and they need to take precedent. I, I have attended and participated, planned, participated in all four of those plans, listening to neighbors. I've already attended planning sessions for two of those neighbors, neighborhoods, and Kennedy Park and Rum Village are to come soon. Thirdly, I, fourthly, I just want to clarify that the city has urban planners, actually very talented people in our planning department. By my count, we have about six or seven. And we recently, we recently also added Ms. Dominique Edwards, who's, who, who looks at food insecurity and has, in her, in her heart, the values of equity. But she, along with the others, are subject matter experts in, in urban planning and zoning and in new urbanism. I talk to them frequently about these topics. And lastly, I just want to address the Thousand Homes issue, because that has come up multiple times. And I don't, I don't disagree that that's a program that could have had more thought. But I do know, because I was one of those persons myself, that was calling for the council, the time and the administration to do something about nuisance properties in our neighborhoods. And so that it might make way for new development on those lots. So those are just some things that I want to share and clarify. Those are the same issues that I, I, I raised, because I don't feel that the resolution addresses that, these topics appropriately. And I do want to say that I think, you know, I'm just not sure that this resolution actually addresses the issues that I've heard people raise tonight, but committed to addressing those issues in other ways. Thank you.
Any other council members, any comments?
Yes, we have Vice President McBride, who has her hand up.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I just wanted to just add my two cents, as coming on council in two thousand and eighteen. Fortunately for me, when I came on, it happened to be the third district's turn, if you will, for our neighborhood plan to go into effect. And that was specifically for the Sore neighborhood in River Park. The Miami Neighborhood Association, we have been trying to get that back and running for years. That's east of Miami. And I just encourage, you know, people to think about, there's a difference between the comprehensive plan and, you know, what some of the funding that is going to be utilized. Some of the funding can be utilized from other resources, whether it's the ARP funds or additional funds from the city. But when you do a comprehensive plan, it puts you on a schedule and gets more intentional for what the neighborhoods want specifically. So I just wanted to state that I am in support, you know, there's times, there's there's things in the third district now that have gotten off of the list that now we can add some additional items of our wish list, if you will, to be added to the Southeast Side, specifically more so than like River Park area. But however, I'm in support of any neighborhood that is going to thrive specifically. I know the West Side has been, it's it's their turn now, you know, they have a lot of needs, I know as well, we all do. So I just wanted to express my support for the comprehensive plan because I know it goes in cycles for different districts. Like when I first came on to light up South Bend, it happens to be the third district and sixth district year in 2018 and 19 to have light up South Bend. So it goes in cycles sometimes with the different sides of town. So I just wanted to express my support of the comprehensive plan to put a little bit more context to some of the council members. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I would like to make some comments. I personally sincerely thank each and every one of you coming tonight to share your concerns, your frustrations, and also to really share with the council the living conditions. And what we, because I'm from the lake and moved to the West Side, and then from the West Side to the third district, the pain. Until someone has lived in neighborhoods that have been challenged historically and underserved neighborhoods. In 2019, the Residential Neighborhood Committee went out into and we were very, very clear on those neighborhoods that we were targeting to have what was called intentional collaborations. There were five areas that were identified that were very challenged in regards from education, public safety, housing, and other areas that we really spent time just listening to our residents and coming back to put together a proposal that was given part of the budget hearing process along with recommendations. And so again, I don't think that I can sit in this chair and say that we, and I'm saying we, historically, that we have served all of our neighborhoods at the same level. And even I would venture to say that even the mayor would probably also, I heard him use this statement, you know, underserved neighborhoods. And so that now, because we have not intentionally strategically began to address these areas, we find ourselves in this position in regards to really how do we collectively work as a council, community, business, you name it, so that we can bring about a change that is needed in our neighborhoods. All districts are not the same. And all districts, they don't need the same thing as other districts may need. But as we begin to look at these underserved neighborhoods, we have a multitude of issues that our citizens are living in, conditions that no one should have to live on a daily basis. I've always said that everyone has the right to live in clean, safe neighborhoods. That's basic. You know, so again, I am support of looking at a the resolution that is intentional. It's not to say that city plan, you know, I was part of that and that process, and they did bring in urban planners. They did bring in firms to really talk with the residents because they were brought, they were bringing in a new philosophy as we begin to look at development. And so again, I think we're at a point that the plan, if I'm not mistaken, a member from Community Investments stated that they have to go back and look at the citizen plan because of tax needs that. So, you know, the timing is just perfect. And I think we have to be intentional. And that's where I'm at at this particular time. So I appreciate all of you, you know, coming and staying with us until this particular time. And we I we hear you. We hear you. Any other comments before I ask for a motion? Okay, council members? Would you like to entertain a motion? Regarding substitute resolution 2144? Is there a recommendation?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Nizgasky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Making sure I didn't hear that. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
I I said nay.
Oh, okay. All right. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Thank you. Substitute resolution 2144 has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please give first reading to Bill 109-21, please?
10921, first reading on an alley vacation, first east-west alley north of Colfax Avenue, running east from Elm Street for a distance of 255 feet plus or minus to its termination with the first north-south public alley east of Elm Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Entertain a motion to send Bill 109-21 to Public Works and Property Vacation set for a committee meeting and public hearing September 13. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you call the roll? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgasky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Clerk Jones, will you please give first reading to Bill 110-21?
11021, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the southwest corner of Adams Road and St. Joseph Valley Parkway, Councilmanic District Number One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
I'll entertain a motion to send Bill 11021 to the South Bend Plan Commission set for September the 20th. Z and A public hearing set for September the 27th. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgasky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Will you now please give first reading to Bill 111-21?
11121, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10749-20, which fix maximum salaries and wages of deputies and employees appointed by the city clerk for calendar year 2021 to delete one full-time position.
Entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance set for September 13, 2021, public hearing and committee meeting. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Nizgasky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Will you now give first reading to Bill 112-21?
11221, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10752-20, which fix maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the City of South Bend for calendar year 2021 to add one new full-time position.
Entertain a motion to send this to Personnel and Finance for committee meeting and public hearing for September 13, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgasky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor? If so, I would like for to read that individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes, only the maximal time for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda.
I don't see anyone virtually that is expressing interest to speak at this time.
Anyone present wish to speak under privilege of the floor on any topics that were not discussed tonight? We do ask to state your name and address.
Christopher Huff, 1831 College Street, South Bend. It's been about four years since I've been here, actually. I think it was probably back in 2009, there was a an agreement that Stephen Licky, Mayor Stephen Licky and the council agreed to called the Combined Sewer Overflow Mandate. It's badly flawed. About five years ago, Mayor Buttigieg and the council, not the council, but Mayor Buttigieg and staff seemed to be on autopilot as far as implementation of that at the time, $750 million project. I came to the council meeting because they were proposing, I believe, 9% compounded over the next few years of increases in water and sewer rates. That raised an alarm with me and it raised an alarm with many other people, too. Because there was such a lack of transparency with this public in that it was a $750 million construction project, but there was another $250 million or more as far as finance charges. So we determined that it was a $1.1 billion project with 100,000 or so folks paying for that. That was $10,000 out of the pocket of every man, every woman, and every child in in this city. So we raised alarms. It was a group of folks, Kathleen, John, Phil, not the Citizen Advisory Committee. We raised the alarms and apparently got the attention of a lot of people, as it should have. I read with curiosity in the South Bend Tribune on Friday evening, oh, interesting, that finally, the Department of Justice has agreed to take that down to the $270 million level that that the city was proposing a couple of, I think it was maybe three years ago in December. So my point in being here is that this group of people basically doing the same thing I am here all evening, bringing attention to some of these grave problems and projects that have been brought and approved by the city. Hence the reason I keep calling it backward or having been backward. We saved the citizens of this city a lot of money, and those people deserve a lot of credit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Saying that they're, I'm sorry.
You know, I can't let it go. Anyways, these are the pictures of the grass growing and the bricks and the weeds growing up. Eli, this is for you. You talked so much last time about compromise on the water rates. I went home, I got an email and I looked it over and 41 cents is all the city came down, and you call that a compromise? There are many things I would call it, but a compromise is not one of them. And you've seen me texting away tonight. I need to get home because I was just notified that two doors down, they broke into the neighbor's house. So, yes, we got problems on the West Side. Thank you.
Is there anyone else under privilege of the floor? I do not see anyone else. And if no one is coming to the podium, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much.